All right, everyone, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All the order, we're Marisol called in sick, she got that weird bug that was getting around. So Maddie, you were the first one through the door, so you're gonna fill in for it today. First item for us is the approval of the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at that? Any edits other than the ones I already received via email? Okay. The way the voting procedures will work is I will ask for a motion and one of the members will move to approve the minutes. Then I'll ask for a second motion and another member will second, and then we'll go to a vote. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. And this are approved. First action, everybody, congratulations. Second item that we have is public comment. Do we have public comment today?
Okay, my name's Connie Marsh and I live up on Squawk. I suppose three points. First one is gonna be a little bit about strategic plan. Second is the presentation on the master mobility plan. I'm a little confused, but I don't get to speak after the presentation, so I'm gonna speak about it now. And then the next one is the cities, the city that I prefer, they gave you a different option from varieties of cities, okay? So we're gonna start with the strategic plan. I don't know if everyone has done theirs, their survey, but you will notice in the mobility area that the sort of actions are counting, right? We are gonna count how many people do this or that. Now, just counting might inform you of what's happening, but it doesn't give you a decision tool for change. What you need is you need a goal that you're trying to get to, and then you count to see how you're doing toward that goal. I am hopeful that the master mobility plan will actually give you those goals, but the way the strategic plan is written, you're successful if you count. And if you're just counting after five years, I don't think you're getting there. Are you getting towards something? So that would be if you haven't done the survey, if you can tickle that in your brain. Now, the presentation for the master mobility plan has sort of a line like this with funding, like five boxes downstream. And funding, because of the way the state has sort of set up the system, that it's easier to get capital funding rather than it is service funding or maintenance funding, funding seems to swirl all through your plans. You can make as many priorities as you want to, but if you have no capacity to fund those priorities, then you might just be spitting in the wind. So I would prefer to see sort of a circle that would allow more of a weaving and not a time order. Now, it may be that that is the intent, and it just came across as a line, but I haven't seen the presentation yet to comment on, so I don't know. And if this sounds like gibberish to you, it's basically, all decisions would be spiking out from one another, having to look at all the component parts, instead of making your decisions, saying we decided, then moving on and saying, oh, how do we fund that? And you say it's not possible, and you start over. So I'm trying to get rid of that. And then the last one is Kirkland, and I can tell you why, because Kirkland has said congestion is here to stay, and we must accept the fact that we cannot build our way out of congestion. And we want to accommodate cars and make it as good as we can, but we are not gonna make it so you can get through town quickly ever again. And I think that is the moment that our town has to get to before we can start making reasonable decisions. Kirkland has already been through it. Our community is not there. Half of them say you can't build your way out, half of them say you can. And to me, that is the crux of the conversation that you would have, and that is why I would consider Kirkland to be the best manual, so to speak. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Connie. If you don't mind, could you fill in the sign-in sheet at the front, just so we have it on?
Yeah, I don't need you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you. All right, for our next item, we have our chair. Is everybody able to read the letters of acceptance? Okay? We have, to make this easy, we have one nomination for each position, and to make it official, we still have to go through a vote. So we will go through a vote, unless there are any questions about that? Okay. Well, do I have a motion? On, I'm sorry. We're gonna first vote on the chair position. AJ has been nominated and accepted the position. Do we have any questions about that? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, now a second?
Second.
Great. So all of those in favor of voting AJ as the chair, say aye.
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 Turn it off. AJ, congratulations.
Thank you.
You wanna take it over and get started for vice chair?
Yeah, sir. So can we have a motion to vote on the vice chair?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. If there's no further comments, we'll go ahead and vote, so all in favor of Nina as, excuse me.
Nina, sorry. In favor of Nina as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
And the vote passes. Congratulations, Nina. Yes, I apologize. We will move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the strategic plan survey. Which is the gray printout?
What's that?
This is the gray printout, right?
I believe so. Good evening. Can you hear me? I gotta duck down a little bit. All right, well, thank you for having me. My name is Bennett Ashbaugh. I am Public Works Operations Streets Manager. I was part of the original strategic plan team that got together to start putting this whole process together. So I'm one of the representatives from that team, and basically, we're gonna do a, I'm here to present what's included in the strategic draft, the draft strategic plan, which is now out for community review. This presentation will cover three areas. I'll provide an overview of what's in the draft strategic plan. We also talk briefly about community engagement and how we can get involved, and finally, the next steps in the strategic plan process. Work on the strategic plan started over a year ago. We established some key goals that would help the city make a more strategic approach to our work. They include provide a clear vision and a strategy of how to achieve that vision. At its core, the strategic plan wanted to work from community priorities. It is seeking to strengthen the city's ability to make deliberate, forward-looking, and informed strategic decisions, allowing for near-term actions which can be understood with a strategic context, increasing the use of metrics and performance indicators to regularly gauge processes and better inform decision-making. And ultimately, the strategic plan is an important means of communicating to the community about the public's plans and how they will work to meet community goals and aspirations. Because community priorities are so critical to this plan, we started with a broad, community-wide engagement process to gather a wide range of thoughts and perspectives from all corners of the community. We established both qualitative and quantitative goals, and checked in on our progress throughout the initial engagement process. This slide shows the internal progress report, which we monitor on a weekly basis and adjust our strategy accordingly. A part of the approach was to check back with the community throughout the process. To date, we've received 1,650 responses. This presentation is a continuation of this process to check back on the draft strategic Early community engagement last March and April shaped our vision, mission, and guiding principles, and helped to identify our strategic priorities. The draft vision that came out of this process is Issaquah thrives as a welcoming community, creating a sustainable legacy for future generation that honors its rich history and passion for the natural environment. We will now get onto the plan itself and explain a little about the parts and pieces and how they interact. This was, is, a plan on the page that is included in the draft plan. It details vision, mission, and guiding principles. The center graphic shows our six strategic priorities that were identified through community input, outside consultant expertise, staff, senior leadership, and then council, review, and refinement. The bottom of the page lists six goals, one for each priority area. The goal statements represent a future condition and are an intermediate step towards achieving the vision. The objectives are the building blocks of the plan and describe the key outcomes that need to be achieved in order to make progress toward the goal. The potential actions are meant to illustrate the work that could be undertaken to make progress on the objectives. The success measures are meant to help gauge progress in each of the goal areas going forward. As you will see, the plan covers a lot of topics, but not everything the city does. The plan will help focus on the cities, will help focus the city's work over the next five years, but it does not mean we won't be doing other important work in the city, such as police services. So we have our six strategic areas. We have mobility, growth and development, social and economic vitality, city leadership and services, and infrastructure. First one we'll get into is mobility. The goal statement is getting around town is easier for people who work, live, and play here. Traffic affects many aspects of life in Issaquah.
Sorry, Bennett, you might ought to cover this. So these, so this is the goal statements that we've already developed?
Correct.
We're seeking feedback on. Okay, so this, so these pages you're walking us through, these aren't new. This is, this is the as-is?
This is the draft plan that has been through council and has been sent out for community response, and staff response, and everybody who we can get to respond and provide their input. So there is a survey out where each of these categories, mobility, growth, and development, et cetera, you can read through them and provide input based on how you feel about them.
Okay.
So the key elements of mobility. Traffic affects many aspects of life in Issaquah, as we all know. Future growth in and around Issaquah is not going anywhere. It's gonna continue to get higher. We want consideration for multiple modes of travel, focus on moving ahead with plans for transportation system improvements. Our objectives are centered around a plan for the overall transportation system is in place, along with funding secured to allow for major projects to proceed. Near-term measures make connections and improve efficiencies in the existing system, not just about planning and preparation, but near-term action. The vision and location for light rail is established, which recognizes the strategic importance of light rail. Some performance measures. Four key performance measures have been outlined: travel mode share, system connectivity, system access, and community satisfaction. Under each of these objectives, as you can see on the slide, there are potential actions as well. Growth and development. Growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. Some of the key elements of this, this area are rapid growth and desirable community. Policies such as Growth and Management Act directly influence how much we're required to grow. City choosing to protect hillsides and neighborhoods and focus on growth on the valley floor. As growth occurs, protecting the community's character and providing amenities, housing choices, and services is important. Four key objectives. Maintaining neighborhood character and putting protections in place. Effective implementation of plans with proactive adjustments with emphasis on livability and balancing of jobs and housing. Infrastructure planning for growth. Working to increase the availability of public amenities, housing options, and services towards a more complete city for a community of our size. Performance measures. Balanced growth, ratio of jobs, housing relative to planned growth. Community livability. Infrastructure investment, growth-related.
Sorry, could you repeat those four again?
Sure. The four objectives?
Yes.
Maintaining neighborhood character and putting protections in place. Effective implementation of plans with proactive adjustments with emphasis on livability and balancing of jobs and housing. Infrastructure planning for growth. Working to increase the availability of public amenities, housing options, and services towards a more complete city for a community of our size.
How does the first goal about maintaining character reconcile with the growth center? Isn't the intent of the urban core to change?
The urban core to change on the valley floor and central Issaquah?
Isn't the intent that over the next couple decades, the character of that neighborhood will change?
There has, there is a zone of central Issaquah that has been identified as our urban growth area, which is where the focus will be for growth.
Right. So the way they're looking at it is two different ways. There's the character that exists now, but there is the character that kind of the vision looks at for what the area's gonna look like 20 years from now. And so the vision for this is aiming for that future vision. So the character for the central Issaquah area is going to change in terms of if you compare now to 20 years from now, yes, that'll change. But for a lot of the surrounding neighborhoods, the idea is that the growth isn't gonna be going in those areas, but more in the central Issaquah area. Does that answer your question? Yes. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a general question about the document, the part that has success measures, and they identify what sort of thing they're measuring, but not how much would success, how much is success? And when does that come into play? Do you know what I mean?
How we define success?
Yeah, well, under, it says success measures and certain things that you're gonna measure, but it doesn't say, it says a percentage of this will be that or a percentage of that.
What is that percentage? Is what you're looking for?
Yeah, when does that come into the planning?
I think that those measures will be more defined as we move into the final versions of these.
In this plan?
In this plan. As this is, as we get feedback back from the community, this still needs to be able to morph a little bit. That's why we have potential actions versus we're gonna do this. We're not there yet. We're still in draft form. This is still an area for you to be able to provide that feedback, and the survey is really a great place to do it.
Is this venue here also supposed to be an opportunity for feedback?
In some senses, it's more of a presentation, but I'm happy to answer what I can.
Yeah, any questions you have on, so Bennett was on the mobility team, talking through the mobility section of the strategic plan. We probably can't answer the questions on the other sections, but we can write those questions down and get those answers back to you. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So we all had focus areas.
Sure. Can we then bounce back to the mobility? I know we looked at it, but there's a lot there, so I think giving the group a chance to...
Could I go, could I finish this?
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll go back.
Okay.
Could we do, could we just get through the, just the general areas, and I'll go back to mobility?
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll just lose track of it all.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, all right, thank you. We got through growth and development, kind of, right? Environmental stewardship. Environmental resources are proactively enhanced, protected, and stewarded. Some of the key elements of this, this area, or environment, is a defining feature for Issaquah. Natural setting, strong community environmental values, engagement of community, development of partnerships to steward the Issaquah environment, and land acquisition for preservation and recreation. Three objectives. Protection and enhancement. Stewardship activities, partnerships, and work with the community. Strategic acquisition for parks, trails, open space, critical areas, flood protection, et cetera. Performance measures. Forest health and development. Natural area restoration protection. Lands restored and protected. Salmon habitat health. Social and economic vitality. An economically vital and diverse community is supported by robust businesses, affordable housing, and supportive services. Some of the key elements of this, this area is residential growth, outpacing job creation, housing affordability, hard for people who work in Issaquah to afford housing in the community. Likewise, more jobs that provide the ability to live and work in the community, more businesses to support more services, improved access to supportive services, increased possibilities to live, work, and thrive in town. Four objectives. Increase in range of living wage jobs in Issaquah. Housing affordability across the income range. Increase live and work in Issaquah. Services to reduce inequities in health and well-being. Increase in new businesses and retention expansion of existing businesses. Performance measures would be job growth, business growth, housing cost burden, and access to support services, supportive services. Two more. City leadership and services. Leadership and accountability in the delivery of public services for our growing and diversifying community. Key elements. Community is becoming more diverse. Good engagement. Diverse methods, clear communication, must be well-integrated in the city processes. Service delivery. Investment into internal operations and systems to better deliver services and focus on continuous improvement. Two objectives. Equitable and a welcoming, welcoming city government, fostering meaningful engagement. Utilizing high-performing systems for effective and efficient service delivery. There's two success measures. Community satisfaction and community engagement. Last but not least, last of the six, is infrastructure. An infrastructure, the goal statement is an infrastructure system that is planned, designed, built, and well-maintained supports current and future community needs. Some of the key elements of this, this area. Infrastructure provides underpinnings, the underpinnings of local economic vitality, environment, and daily lives. City has leveraged growth, but it needs to shift focus and consider not just expansion, but also ongoing maintenance and replacement. Plan for recent growth and planned, and a planned future. Objectives. One key objective, but it is significant. Basically, we put plans and resources into place to operate, maintain, and replace infrastructure throughout its lifecycle. Effective asset management policy to manage portfolios, streets, to manage the portfolio, streets, utilities, buildings, and parks. The performance measure is an asset maintenance deferral rate. The plan concludes with an implementation framework that's described, that describes tools for success and an overall framework for the strategic plan. Since this is the first strategic plan for Issaquah, describing a disciplined approach to implementation helps to outline expectations and provide avenues for making changes. There are three components to this framework. Strategic plan work, critical services, work plan, and timely opportunities. The city has many lines of businesses and ongoing necessary functions. The framework recognizes there is work for the city that will align with the strategic plan, but there is other work, there is other work that meets critical needs and that are also emergent needs and opportunities that arise. This includes five key criteria to help assess the relative favorability and timing of our particular actions. The graphic depicts an annual calendar connecting strategic planning with the budget process. It provides an avenue for adjustment, deliberation on current issues. It includes a period for reporting out to the community on progress, and increases accountability in the plan. Overall, it follows a scientific process of planning, doing, evaluating, and adjusting. Plan, do, check, adjust. And establishes continuous improvement at a central tenet of the strategic plan and the organization more broadly. We are now seeking input from the community on overall strategic plan as well as the goal area objectives, and collecting of potential actions. We have looped back with many of the people who participate in the process thus far, including survey respondents, focus groups, meeting in a box, charrette participants, and community members. We're collecting feedback through an online survey, survey found on the city's webpage. The survey is open until March 31st, and we'd like to hear your input. City council will be reviewing this feedback in April, and will be moving toward adoption of the plan in May. Now let's go back to mobility.
I think before I jump in, I'll open up the rest of you guys, if you want to ask any questions. I think what we'll try to do, I think what we'll try to do is you can either stick your hand up or stick your thing on your side. Have any questions for?
I'd say why don't we stick with what we've done before, we'll turn this to sides who are consistent?
Yeah, sounds good. So I will, I will start. One thing, so, I know you guys can tell I'm excited. So one thing, so like, for instance, this talks a lot about transit and light rail and whatnot, which is great. Is it gonna talk specifically around motor vehicle circulation, or is that intended to be implied, since that's still the way most people are gonna move around?
Are you referring to, what exactly are you referring to?
If I'm looking at like the specific actions, it talks about transit plan, bike plan.
Uh huh.
Like, for instance, a good example would be like, what are we gonna do with I-90?
What are we gonna do with I-90?
Yeah. And so, cause when we did, when we did our strategic planning for central Issaquah, we talked about how one of, one of our vision statements was we wanted I-90 to be more permeable.
Mm-hmm.
Idea that there would be more ways to get across I-90.
Mm-hmm.
Both, both vehicle and non-vehicle. Would that be the kind of thing that would show up in a document like that, or is that too specific for a citywide vision? I'll ask Sheldon to help answer that question, cause there's, there's work items already going on beyond just what the strategic plan is gonna be outlining for actions, and Sheldon can't talk about that. Before you dive in, Sheldon, I think my question I'm trying to get at is, how specific is this? Cause we're, we're gonna be kind of dealing with obviously a lot more specificity here at the tab, and how do we close the gap between the detail which we're working on, and then this very high-level, one-pager?
The strategic plan is not that granular to get down to that level of detail. It sets the broader goals, action items, in the different areas. It is not gonna get down to the project by project. It is not going to get down to the project-by-project granularity.
There are other, like Stephen said, there are other facets of our work plans, existing work plans, that are addressing those, those type of specific projects in terms of I-90. The light rail itself, we felt as a mobility team, needs to be identified and addressed, not only based on public comment, but based on the fact that it's likely coming, and we want to be prepared for it, because it'll change the dynamics of mobility through this town in a very drastic way. So that was the intent of light rail, and transit system, and mobility, master plan, and all of that are all taking a stab, and hopefully going to help define our mobility system in the future, so.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to say is, in your mobility master plan, I actually, and I provided this feedback online as well, so that was me. But one of the things I really liked was in your success measures, the way you sort of, because you measure for what is important to you, and I really appreciated the fact that the city, through this effort, was, well, one, focused on sort of multiple, measuring multiple modes, so it's not just RR roads at like a, you know, Level F service or XYZ, but it was really getting to the point where you're looking at all the different modes and measuring that, and so I think that's really important as a city, especially as one that's sort of trying to create density...
Absolutely.
And create better options for mobility. I, and as somebody who's a non-motorized transportation nerd, I really appreciated that. And then also just sort of looking at some of that smart system connectivity, so we have some major pieces of infrastructure investment, and how do we sort of piggyback off of that to create better value for our residents through, you know, finishing links here and there, so.
Absolutely, and that is the intent of how our objectives and mobility are laid out. We have the long-term, larger projects that we want to work towards, being able to build those, and then we also have the near-term action, or near-term objectives, which is we want to close gaps in sidewalks, we want to connect bike lanes to transit and all of that. So it's not just, you know, concrete and asphalt, we're also looking at the programmatic aspects of how do we, how do we close the gaps and get people around town using different modes? Because as you heard in the other areas, growth and development, there's a lot of growth, and we're going to get more dense, density, so that's where we're trying to head. So please do the survey, especially this group, that would be very helpful in helping define this going forward. Is there anything else? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so Stephen, you're up next to talk rules and regulations.
Don't have a presentation for this, so just pull up the, the rules and regulations that are in your packets. For those of you that read through it, there, there are quite a bit of changes, but in terms of context, not really a whole lot changed, except for the main sections that we had talked about the last time we went through this. So that's, that's where I want to actually start, is on those highlighted sections in your packets, and then I'm going to ask Tina occasionally to help me answer any questions that you may have. The clerk's office was, worked with us very closely to make sure that we were consistent with a lot of the other rules and regulations of the other boards and commissions, and that was the primary reason for a lot of the changes. So we'll start with section four C. With this section, the board had originally asked if we could identify a certain percentage of regular attendance to, to monitor basically those who have a large number of excused absences, and the reason why it wasn't included in the language for the rules and, for the TAB, was it wasn't going to be consistent with all the other boards and commissions, particularly with the city council, so that we didn't want to go that direction. But that is something that we can look at later on, but for right now, we're wanting to kind of try this out to see, we, we don't want to identify as a problem before it's actually a, a problem. Are there any questions on that? Okay. With the, the next section, we were, we were identifying the municipal code that defines how regular absences are actually tracked, and that's, that's also going to be consistent with the other boards and commissions. AJ.
And, and that's specific to regular meetings?
Yes. Actually, it's going to be all meetings, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's why I, I mean, I want to be consistent with the municipal code, but it feels like that would...
Yeah.
Be better if you struck regular.
So make it sure it's consistent with...
From the first and the second one. It would be just three consecutive unexcused meetings, all meetings.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
And unable to attend just meetings in general.
You're saying three consecutive unexcused scheduled meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, do you need to modify, you say meetings?
Yeah. Tina, do you have something to?
I just want to make sure that it's in line with the IMC.
Yeah.
More than three consecutive unexcused regular meetings.
So could it just say unexcused, just meetings?
Take out bigger.
I believe your...
Doesn't matter.
You can't be less restrictive.
I think that would be more restrictive.
Yes, sorry. Cannot be more restrictive than your code, so let's see what it says. And we said 2.92020 membership. And it states regular meetings.
So for right now, we'll keep the language consistent, and then visit that later if there is an issue that we can recover.
Yeah, and, you know, the intent behind that is your regular meetings are known, your schedule is set for the year, special meetings come up, but it's still, the spirit of it is, we're looking for you to attend, you know, all the meetings that, that you possibly can, and recognize there will be moments where you're ill, and we don't want you here, where you need to be resting, or where you just have conflicts, and it's about being, providing as much advance notice as possible so that alternates can be prepared and staff has an expectation that there'll be a quorum.
All right. Are there any more questions about that? We can move on to the next highlighted section, which is section seven C?
Six C? No. Seven, I'm sorry, I can't read.
Seven CB. Sorry, it's a little confusing. It's about the public comment and what the commenters will be stating before they actually take part in public comment, and what the board had requested last time was for the commenter to state name, address, and relationship to the city, but in addition to that, stating their relationship to any items. And the reason why the language didn't go in was, again, we were trying to be more consistent with what the city council and the other boards and commissions are going to be requiring in their rules and regulations, and until it becomes an issue, that we, we want to try to stay consistent with that. Are there any questions on that? Nina?
Just wanted to bring up that it was brought up in public comment that requiring somebody to say their address, and this is where Tina might come in, is perhaps not allowed by state law.
No, we, we're not requiring someone to identify their address, we're simply asking them to state their name, address, and/or relationship, so as much as they can give us, the more informed we can be, and that's the, the intent there. I think what you heard was, there is not a requirement for an individual to sign up on a desk or indicate that, so that's optional.
Right, and then it would be on the chair's responsibility to say, or, when you're asking for an address.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes folks like, like to, you know, provide a general neighborhood of where they're from, and I think when folks are commenting, you'll hear what item that they're speaking to and how it impacts them or affects them.
Are there any more questions on that? So that was pretty much all we had covered for the last meeting. Was there anything else that stood out to any of you that were, was able to read through this prior to the meeting? Nina?
I just wanted to bring up, in my review of this, we had a lengthy discussion about whether you need to be present, or whether we could have dial-in meetings, and I appreciated that we're making use of our alternates, alternates, and that you have to be present to participate.
Any other questions, comments? Great.
Could I interject?
Yes, please.
So there was an inquiry offline about minutes and the types of minutes that are taken, so I just wanted to clarify, the city has an existing policy that says we take action minutes, so I peeked at your packet, that's pretty unsinked. This isn't about capturing debate and dialogue, it's really capturing the outcome and the action and next steps. So that's the intent of your minutes, that's the document that lives on.
Great, thank you. AJ?
For public comment, do we have to require that it's on topic?
I'm sorry?
For public comment, do we have to require it's on topic? I know I've seen that at some other board meetings I go to, where the...
So...
They have to speak to something on the agenda item, is that...
So you could restrict the agenda to agenda items only, you might be limiting yourself to hearing a future item, so we, we lifted information for that section that was consistent with our other boards.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there are no other edits, comments, as it stands, you can actually take action on this tonight if you want to. I'll leave that to the chair.
All right, so do I hear...
Nina, I'm sorry.
I want to make a motion.
Oh, okay. I say, do I have a motion to adopt the rules and regulations for the Transportation Advisory Board? Nina?
Thank you. I move that we adopt the rules and regulations for the Transportation Advisory Board as presented tonight.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, do we have any further comments? We'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Do we need to...
I'll have a clean, I'll have a clean version to sign at your next meeting.
All right, practice your signatures, we'll, we'll do that later.
What we can do is actually take signatures tonight, and then I'll just put this page on, a fixed page later.
Okay.
So everybody can get signatured.
All right.
We'll do that at the end.
Okay, we'll do it at the end. All right, so move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the intro to the mobility
All right, so, that's not it. So for this presentation, this is the presentation I actually gave to the city council at their work session earlier this month. What I explained to them was...
Is your mic on?
It is. Let me grab the bench, because I guess I'm too tall, too. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the same presentation I gave to the city council at their work session earlier this month. What I explained to them is, gave them the purpose of the project. Up until, you know, a few years ago, the city council gave staff direction to develop a mobility master plan and budget for it. Up until, you know, for the last couple of years, it's just been updates from the city administrators, getting, letting them know what's going on on the staff side. It wasn't until earlier this month they actually got a presentation on what was being planned, and so I walked them through the project schedule, and that's, that's what the timeline is that I'll walk through in a minute. And then also how this relates to the transportation advisory board, and how the mobility master plan will get developed, and which is why the MMP is the advisory board's main objective for this year in terms of like their work plan, is this is going to be a really, a huge load to, to pick up, to, to help staff put this plan together. And because I'm giving you the same presentation, I'll give you the same project purchase, or purpose, and that is to help align the city priorities for transportation. As you all know, as, as we've talked about in our previous meetings, there are a lot of different plans outline goals and objectives, and even action items and policies around what transportation means for the city. One of the handouts that you have outlines a lot of those policies and goals, which is a lot, and some of them aren't necessarily consistent with each other, and so this process is to simplify that and align everything so that we can actually work from a much more clear vision of what transportation should look like for the future. AJ?
I think this is, can you go back one?
Yeah.
I think this is why I was confused with my question that Sheldon answered. What's so, the one on the right, the purple one, that's from...
That's the comprehensive plan, the transportation element on, in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so that's comprehensive plan, whereas this is the strategic plan.
Yes.
I was trying to get my plans.
Yeah, so the, the biggest difference is the comprehensive plan is that 20-year vision. The goals, objectives in that. The strategic plan is our five-year vision of what the city can accomplish in the next five years. That's the biggest difference between why we're trying to do the strategic plan and what, what the difference is with the mobility master plan being basically replacing that vision from the comprehensive plan. So when we're done, the mobility master plan, the vision, the goals, and the, and the objectives in that are going to essentially replace what's in the comprehensive plan.
So the MMP's timeframe is also more or less 20 years?
Yes.
Okay. You.
Mm-hmm. Cynthia, do you have a question? Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm picking out whether your name card's up or your mic's on at red, so make sure it's off, so I don't call on you, please. All right, so for project schedule, this outlines what we're going to be doing for this year in terms of working on the mobility master plan. There are five major phases of this project, which we, we've already started the existing conditions analysis, that's something that, essentially the consistent, the consultant team collects all existing information and data of what's going on now, what we've been doing, and they're going to do an analysis of where we stand today. And then we're going to start, then we move into the phase of talking about city priorities, and that's something that we're transitioning to now. And that, that will, that's essentially what the conversation with the city council will be on April 8th, is having that conversation of what the city priorities should be for the city, and, and you saw some examples from the other cities in your handout of what some other cities have outlined as their major priorities, and I, I gave that to you just so you have an idea of what a product of that process looks like, just, just to help you think about the type of ideas we're wanting to bring up at the city council conversation. The next phase of that process is a little, is going a little more detailed of now we have these city priorities, what do we need to do in terms of what policies support those priorities, what programs and projects support those priorities, and what's existing that can stay, what's new should we introduce, what should be changed? And so that, that's, that's why it's a much longer phase of the process is because we're actually going to be doing a much deeper dive of what's existing and, and any new ideas that we need to introduce. From there, we go to the plan drafting and plan review process, and then we move into the council adoption process. Essentially, what we put together, there'll be a final draft... Essentially, what we put together, there'll be a final draft by the end of the year. But there still needs to go through approval process with the City Council and getting the legislation through. Any questions on the process? Nina?
I wanted to ask about the consultant pre-planning. Have we already seen the products of that, or is that something that's still coming?
That's something that's still coming. We'll get a existing conditions analysis report from them in the next month.
And when you say conditions analysis, one of my big questions was how we have so many inconsistencies in our existing documents and how am I going to chart that as an individual? Are you saying that somebody's going to help me with that and bring me some way of tackling it?
Yes, so that's exactly what they're going to be doing, is they're looking at all planning documents, and they're looking at all the different policies that relate to transitations, things that the TAB will be considering in the future meetings. And they're going to point out to say, okay, the planning policies in this document say this, but in this other planning document, it's actually, it's saying something a little bit different. So that's something that needs to be discussed in this process. Are there any questions? Sujah?
So my question pertains to looking at your project schedule. So when you have the blue dots that say joint boards and commissions meetings?
Yes.
And it looks like there's that one in April that's coming up, and then the one in November. So are we, like, are we going to meet with the Parks Commission, or is that what you mean by joint?
Yes, so for those two blue dots, sorry, I'll get to the dots in a second.
Oh yeah, sorry.
For the two blue dots, we're organizing a joint meeting with the other boards and commissions. So we'll either have the full board and commission, or we'll have just a few members from them. For instance, because our, right now, the Parks Board is meeting over in the Pickering Room. They just might have one or two representatives actually come to our joint meeting on April 22nd since, so, because they want to continue with their own work plan as well. But they'll bring feedback as part of that. But because these are going to be organized with the public engagement process, a survey is actually going to be available to them prior to that meeting. So they can actually give us a little feedback prior to the meeting and not just depend on the members that are attending. Okay? Any other questions? I'll go to the dots now to kind of explain the wild colors. So, you know, starting with the council session, giving them introduction to this process in March. We'll going in March with the, basically, starting our public outreach process. So doing a public survey, going to neighborhood meetings, pushing the survey, going to other existing events to get people to know the project is going on, but also asking for feedback from the process to get the community's feedback on what the priority should be for transportation citywide. Or within their own neighborhoods, but trying to get an idea of what should this vision actually look like with as much feedback as possible. And I'm hoping to get some of your help to get some of that engagement from the community. The other items that we'll be doing is the advisory board and the council joint session, that's starting that conversation. So we had a workshop with staff earlier this month to talk about those priorities. That kind of started a very preliminary draft of priorities. We'll bring that to the City Council meeting on April 8th. And then whatever revisions or changes or complete new priorities that come out of that, that'll get introduced to the public engagement process. So that's what'll be in the public survey later in April. The, in May, we're actually, I'm planning field trips for staff. Emma?
Oh, so for the, like, sessions to get survey feedback, would we just do the online or would we also do, like, different modes of, like, getting feedback? I know that you were talking about, like, setting up a station at our school. Were you planning on doing that with other schools in the district or, like, community centers?
Yes, so there's events, like lunches at the senior center, there's events, there's, I'm trying to think of all the different events going on in April. I'm working with our communications group to look at what all the existing events are that we can kind of piggyback off. I plan on waking up very early, go to the transit centers and parking rides, the handout slips for people to fill out the survey while they're on the bus. We're going to go to any community center events, senior center events, any events that happen to be going at the schools. It's primarily going to be Isquaw High School since that's the one that's within the city. But I hope to talk to the administration to try to get feedback from the broader school community because even though students or parents don't live in Isquaw, they certainly travel in Isquaw whether it's for business, work, or for school. So getting feedback around how to get around better is going to be important, too. Any other que, oh, Nina?
Stephen, I'm sorry, I don't have recorded specifically what we're doing on April 8th. Are we meeting with the City Council? I have both of them on, I have our meeting and I have the council meeting in my calendar.
Our meeting is the joint meeting with the City Council on April 8th, yes.
Is Eagle Room?
It's still being decided.
Kind of doesn't matter.
It's either going to be in council chambers, 6:30. And I'll update the calendar invite that went out to all of you about that on the location. But it's either going to be this room or the Pickering Room, because those are the only two locations that have video capabilities.
At 6:30?
Yes. So I'll update the calendar invites that went out to all of you, once we have a final location figured out. Any other questions? Okay. In May, we're going to be planning field trips for staff and potentially some council members to go to some of our neighbor cities who have gone through this process before and kind of learned from their experience on putting together a master plan, but also the implementation of the master plan. What did they learn afterward are some of the bigger important lessons that I'm hoping to get out of that process so staff can figure out what kind of changes do we need to make internally to be able to support a lot of the priorities that are coming out of this process. And I'm hopefully going to be able to plan a field trip with all of you, depending on schedules, too. And I'll discuss that more with you later in terms of where do we want to go, what do we want to discuss? Okay? In June, I'll give the City Council an update on how the process is going and answer any questions they may have. Potentially give them a little bit of an update of how the community or the public engagement process go. But by that point, the full report won't be ready yet, so they'll just get pretty much a high-level update of how everything went. We'll, as we're working through the third phase of the project, we'll be taking on another public engagement process to gain a little more feedback of where the major issues are and how we can relate to our priorities. Was that going to be your question, Tom?
Yeah, my question was on the public engagement, if it's actually an open house or a survey. If that's the time that we would send a survey.
Yeah, so we'll, instead of going out to everybody again, we're going to go out to specific stakeholders and have that big open survey again. Primarily because what we've learned through even the strategic plan process, you really introduce the idea, reach out to everybody, but you don't want to go through the same effort again because not everybody is really going to stay interested. And so you really want to keep those who are interested engaged. And so you take their contact information, you kind of keep them engaged, and you do that with the remainder of the project. Any other questions on the public engagement? Okay. So in September, that's when, September, October-ish time, we'll have another joint meeting with the City Council. And that is, we will meet with the City Council. That meeting will primarily be a discussion to update the City Council on everything that's been worked on thus far, but also talk about the funding component for the Mobility Master Plan. Not necessarily say what should be funded and what shouldn't, but more of deciding on what the prioritization criteria should be for funding. Since that's the level that the TAB is really going to be discussing throughout this process. And then when we get to the plan drafting phase, we'll have another update with all the other boards and commissions to talk about the full process and get their feedback on how it relates to some of their work plans. And then also engage the community with the review of the draft plan.
Are we going to have a framework on how we're supposed to prioritize, or is that going to be relatively open-ended?
A framework will get proposed coming from the priorities, so everything will kind of just flow for the discussion. Okay? And then from the draft review process, we'll have that public engagement again. Everybody who wants to stay engaged does stay engaged, and that everything they commented on was heard and reflected in the plan. And so that's something that we'll work through, and then we'll go through the plan adoption process. Any questions on the project? Okay. And then this schedule was more specific to the TAB. It relates a lot to how we'll be working on the Mobility Master Plan, but it gives a little more detail of some of the items that we'll actually be discussing. So what we already know needs to be updated are those three, three items at the bottom of the schedule. So the complete streets policy, the pedestrian crossing guidelines, and then the traffic calming program. Three major items that have already been flagged by staff that need to update. So we want to get actually started on that sooner rather than later through the Mobility Master Plan process. Are there any questions on those three items? When we get to those parts on our work plan, we'll discuss more of what they actually are and what we want them to be. And so this right now is just kind of the high level, this is what's coming up. Okay? And what we have planned for engaging the community includes a lot of the, so the survey right now for the strategic plan, that uses a platform called Peak Democracy. And we'll be using that same platform to put out surveys to the community to do online, but also to help us do analytics of the kind of feedback we're getting back and are there parts of the community that we're not hearing from, so we can actually try to put a little more effort to engage them a little bit more. And then we'll be using a lot of the same platforms that our communications groups uses for social media, emails, any pop-up events that are pre-existing that we can show up and actually talk with the community and potentially have focus groups, a little deeper dive discussion on a lot of the topics related to transportation. Any questions on this? All right. Are there any questions on the Mobility Master Plan and the TAB's role? AJ?
On the three things that we touch on, the complete streets policy, pedestrian crossing, traffic calming?
Yes.
So it sounds like the big lift of the Mobility Master Plan is to lay out a prioritized project pipeline. I think is that, but, so you're laying out what are, I mean, you start with priorities and policies and eventually you get to what are the programs and projects that we want to work on and how we'd fund that. But then, maybe can you, just because we haven't done this yet, this should probably be more clear in a couple more months. But is the intent primarily around that, or is it more on the policy side? Because these three bars here, to me, really strike me much more as we're providing guidance on, like, city policies that then get implemented through the course of another project. Is the master plan, which is it, or is it very much both?
Yes, it's both.
Okay.
So, yes, we'll be talking about kind of the citywide mobility master plan policies. But as, because these three are flagged as being done a little bit sooner rather than later, we're going to be having more specific discussion on those ones, which have kind of citywide implications to it.
Are those three all city code that ultimately we'll be looking to potentially modify?
The complete streets policy, yes, the pedestrian crossing guidelines, I don't think that's code. And the, yeah. Actually, I think the traffic calming program is in code. There is a formal program for that, so two yes, one no. Any other questions on the schedule? Stephanie, did you have a question? Okay. All right. There's nothing else, thank you. Actually, I didn't get to walk through the handouts, so let's do that. So does everybody take a look at this handout prior to the meeting? It's okay if you didn't, we'll just walk through it now. Our consultant team put this together for us as we're kind of talking through the priorities workshops, one, you know, with the staff, the next one being with the City Council and you guys. Just to help you visualize the process, but also visualize the amount of work this is going to take. The first page being, every step that we're going to be taking for this project and all the topics we'll be discussing. And then the second and third page and fourth page, identifying all the existing goals in the city related to transportation. One thing that I've learned in the transportation profession, and the consultant team will agree on this, is the more you can simplify your goals, the easier it is for implementation. Because if you can't go to a community member and ask them, hey, what's your city's goal for transportation? They're not going to be able to list off three pages worth of goals. They'll be able to list off five or six, maybe six, which is the direction that you see with all the other cities. You see really that sweet number around five or six being those priorities or goals to identify the vision for transportation. And that first one being the city of Redmond, five keys, oh, I'm sorry, the first one being the city of Kirkland's vision for, I think it's eight, nine.
So hold on, so these, so the first three pages were just, you did the survey that you mentioned to Nina, that this is what's already there?
Yes.
And then these last four pages, three pages are?
These are the?
Examples from other cities?
Yes, thank you. So the first city is city of Kirkland's, it's their major goals, also the major chapters in their transportation master plan.
And this one you did?
I helped with the finalization of this, so I came on board right as they were finalizing the final draft. And so the second page, the five key strategies asked for the city of Redmond. And I, what I like about the city of Redmond is they're actually very similar. When they had these conversations, they were similar place as city of Isquaw, being that they were planning for light rail. And you see that being, that's their number one priority on this list of five. And what we can learn from the city of Redmond is being that they're also a fringe city of being on the outside of that urban area of the Puget Sound, of where major development's going to be happening. And so they've had these conversations 20 years before Isquaw has. And so they've, we can learn a few lessons from what they've experienced, getting from, starting the conversation of, do we even want light rail, to where do we put it, to now we have it, now what do we do? So they've gone through a lot of different steps to get to where they are today, and they're getting light rail service starting in 2023. So we're going to be able to learn a little bit from their experience. And then with the city of Coma, very similar to the city of Kirkland's, but more specific to just the six main priorities. And then on the last one, that's actually a master plan in development currently with the city of Sumamish. They outline, this is to give an example of decision-making criteria, evaluation criteria that they came up with in their process. Not that we're going to follow this, but just to give you an idea of the discussion, the type of product that will kind of give us. Are there any questions on any of these? Okay. The main reason I wanted to give you all this is to help kind of come up with any questions that you may have. And I can help answer them prior to the meeting with the City Council, or you can bring them to the City Council meeting. If you have questions specifically for the City Council on when we're discussing what the city priorities for transportation should be. You have a question? Oh.
This thing stays red. Okay, so I apologize, maybe I'm being too specific, but I guess I'm trying to figure out, so we have these components, right? And each one of these components, I'm assuming, I mean, I've worked on funding in the past, so I'm assuming there's like, these are the 12 options and blah, blah, blah. So every single one of these boxes will get unpacked at some point with? So every single one of these boxes will get unpacked at some point with all of the various components of it.
Yes.
But I guess, I guess what I'm confused about, and I apologize, I'm being really dense, but, so how do these boxes relate to how we've laid it out on the timeline? Are these the priorities, or, I mean, like, so, you know, these are sort of how we're going to work through, are these the policies and programs? So we'll start working on these different boxes?
Yeah, so the main schedule you're looking at now, where you have the calendar and the breakdown of the boxes, that's kind of grouping a lot of things together.
Oh, okay.
So this one that you're looking at is kind of that process flow for discussion. So once we get through the transportation priorities, we'll start talking about the metrics. And then we'll also start talking about project lists. Some of it will be happening at the same time, but that is just kind of the flow will be going all the way to the final plan.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then the idea is the legis, sorry. And then the idea is the legislative process, so as we're sort of completing priorities, we're checking back in with council, and then, you know, so as we're sort of moving through completion of these different work program items?
Yeah.
We're sort of doing an immediate check back versus waiting till we finish the whole thing and then doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Cynthia?
So I'm just sort of curious, maybe too much, but one thing that strikes me is, is there some kind of articulation of the values driving some of these priorities, like, you know, equity and social justice, or, you know, I mean, are there, is there ever a statement of guiding values or values or guiding principles even before we talk about priorities, to sort of frame those?
You can bring that up, actually, with the discussion with the city council of, should we actually call that out as a priority? Typically for, like, transportation, you'll say access to all, as kind of a broader statement, but underneath that, you'll go a little more specific in saying identifying the health implications or the equity implications related to transportation. Is that, Cynthia?
Kind of, I just think it might be useful, and it may be captured, maybe the answer is it's captured elsewhere, but it does seem to me to make sense to have a clear identification of some of the values driving the objectives. And that is a little different than some of the characteristics or some of the reasons, but I think to be overt about some of the values that are driving the priorities, maybe they're captured elsewhere, but I guess I just want to make sure that we are all, we're not making assumptions, and we're pretty clear on that.
Yeah, so one other project that's going on this year that the Office of Sustainability is taking on is working with regional partners to identify healthy needs indicators for the community, and that's something that we'll be working with them on to make sure that we're consistent, like, the language in the mobility plan are consistent in terms of knowing what those needs are and how we're going to be attacking that in the implementation of the mobility master plan. Hopefully that gets at a little of what you're asking about. All right. As we kind of work through this process, more detail will be revealed, not a lot. I'm not able to answer a lot, because we haven't really started those conversations yet. Once we start those conversations, it'll be a little bit easier for me or the consultant to be able to answer a lot of that. Naina, I think, was next.
Thank you, and thank you, Cynthia, for bringing that up, because when I was looking through our packet, I was wondering if during our meetings, if we could always have plan on a page visible somewhere in this room, that maybe it's our splash screen when we don't have something else up on the computer screen, because to have the vision and mission and the guiding principles, which include equity and other priorities, can help ground us as we go through a very creative process to stay consistent with the work that's been done for the strategic plan. And it would include some of those things you were just talking about. I think that would be really nice if we could work that in somehow, to have this summary easily accessible while we're working, if that's possible.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to the consultant, see how we can start that conversation with city council, to give you a better, a firmer foundation for when you're talking with them. Is that reasonable? Okay. AJ?
I think more tactically, when the time comes for us to prioritize having those values, we know to anchor our priorities upon, I think, would be very useful, so if we can get some guidance from council in terms of what our aims are. Because I think if, it's interesting when you look at this, the, thanks, what we have in the strategic plan and the central school plan are very tactical outcomes, which are great, but then when you compare that with what, like Tacoma and Samamish have, these are much more articulated of value that they want to realize, as opposed to, what we have is a lot of things around, like, mode share, and I feel like these kind of metrics are a little more derivative of, there's a value that's implied behind it. We can be a little bit more explicit about that, particularly within the group, so that when the time comes to make difficult trade-offs that we will need to make, prioritizing the work plan, we have, we're all on the same page about what should be driving those priorities. Should, in theory, help make these conversations more efficient if we're all on the same page about what exactly we're trying to trade off.
Okay.
I mean, council might punt that back to us to tell it's our job, but we can at least ask.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair question to ask. Any other questions? All right, any questions for, on what to expect for the April 8th meeting? Like I said, I'll update calendars on where the final location will be, so that you all know, and then I'll also follow up with the same email reminders on locations.
Do you want to talk through the other handouts real quick?
Yes, yeah, so those, we're going to come through our next item, which is announcements.
Oh, okay. Or the staff report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, not announcements, staff report.
All right, so for reports, I'm going to turn it over to Sheldon real quick to talk about our financial ad hoc committee that has been, that made a recommendation to city council on funding for capital projects related to transportation.
Thank you, Stephen. So in your packet, there was a copy of the city council packet item, Agenda Bill 7750, which they had a thorough discussion on March the 4th. And what that was, was it was the council finance ad hoc committee's recommendation, back to the full city council, on how to fund certain unfunded transportation projects. This is a work program item that the city council has in front of them and has had for about, oh, a year and a half or so. So these are items that they are going to continue and finish on their own in their own discussions. One moment, AJ. And so out of the discussions, there were, one, two, three, seven projects that were on the list from the finance ad hoc committee. You can look at the agenda bill and see those. Those are multimillion-dollar projects, with the exception of the concept development for Northwest Gilman Boulevard. In the conversation, they requested additional information at their meeting, and the administration is currently preparing responses to that, and the ad hoc committee is planning to meet on May the 13th for a follow-up conversation. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's the council workshop on May the 13th, where the administration's going to prepare and provide the answers to those questions. And so feel free, go to the March 4th YouTube video of the council meeting, if you want to see that agenda item. They spent about an hour plus or minus on the topic, and so I guess with that, I'll open for questions.
Where did the seven projects come from? Did that come out of an existing document, or did that just come straight from council?
Those projects are actually on the existing transportation improvement plan. Those were projects that were put on by the administration a number of years ago, and some of them are concurrency-related projects, other ones are projects that are needed for safety and other purposes, all designed to increase mobility.
Was the main reason these are unfunded is just because they were so big, and so they just kind of carried on from year to year, or carried on but not executed?
The size and magnitude of the cost of the project is one of the major reasons why they're on the unfunded list, yeah.
Which of these projects were in the levy that got rejected in 2016, or 18, whatever that was?
The projects that were on the list, that were on the ballot measure, I believe it was 2015 or 16, you're correct, one was the Southeast 43rd project, that's AKA Providence Point Signalization. The other was Newport Maple to Sunset, and I believe those are the two that were on the, two of the three that were on that list.
What happened to the other ones? Are they now off the, out of the queue, so to speak?
They're still on the transportation improvement plan. The other one was East Sunset Way, and that one has since had some work done on it with the pavement overlay program.
Tom, do you have a question?
Sorry, no, I don't.
All right, well, if there's no other questions. The other items that we added to your packet were maps. At your last meeting, you all actually requested to see what the Central Issaquah Regional Growth Center and the boundaries there should be, so you have one map of all the subareas in Issaquah. The other map is the Identified Regional Growth Center in Issaquah, which is primarily located in the Central Issaquah subarea. There's nothing to explain about it, we just wanted to give it to you, since they're a little hard to find. And then I apologize, there's no binders today, we'll have that at your next meeting. Shipment doesn't come till tomorrow. The other reports were just placeholders. The chair's report, I'll leave it up to AJ if he has anything to put, but that's typically something if he attends any other board commission meetings and just report out on anything, and he attends, or if he has meetings, staff, or something related to some of our work plan, then he'll report out on that. For the youth report, that is typically, I'll give it to Kobe or Emma or Maddie to actually talk about and give any updates on anything going on. You don't actually have to give any reports tonight, since it's kind of thrown at you, but if you have actually anything to announce, feel free. I don't think we have anything.
Given I've spent my entire chairmanship in your presence to date, I have nothing to announce. So we've done our staff report, I have no chair report, Kobe has no youth report. Is there any other business or announcements? Okay, so we will close, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:29. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Congratulations and thanks.